Good morning. We'll call the meeting to order at 8:02. And I will ask for a roll call.
Barbara Dean.
President.
Mike Gavin.
Here.
Steve Buffalo.
Here.
Lauren Herman.
Here.
Steve Joseph Jackson.
Very good. And I will make the public comment announcement. As you're all aware, by order of the governor, portions of these, portions of his orders of March 12th, relax parts of the Brown Act. And that allows individuals to attend the meeting via teleconference without having to admit the public into this location. Anyone wishing to view the agenda can do so on the website. The meeting is recorded and available as a public record. And anyone wishing to make a comment in person, of course, needs to practice social distancing. People wishing to share a comment may do so as well via Zoom and needed to submit that request via email. Did we have any requests submitted?
No.
Okay, very good. Then let's move to item four, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
You all turn toward the flag with your hand over your heart and begin with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, without any bounds.
And we'll move to item five, approval of the meeting agenda. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? The agenda's approved. Action items, action items are item six, 6.1, Approval of Accreditation Midterm Report. May I have a motion? So move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Before we vote, I'd just like to thank everyone who participated in putting together that very thorough report. We appreciate the work and look forward to its submission. All in favor of approving the midterm report?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 6.2, Approval of Resolution Number 20-21/4, Authorization for Approval of Master Agreement for Project and Construction Management Services and Project Assignment Agreements. Do you have a motion? So move. Is there any discussion? No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That allows us to move to item seven. 7.1 is our Budget Workshop Working Session. And I will hand it over to begin that presentation.
Sarah Miller will start with the presentation and then we'll go through questions and discussion if you have any further.
Perfect.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Our topics this morning include budget projections, excuse me. Budget projections, deferrals, cash flow, and trans. Some of this you heard at the last board meeting when I was giving an update. So it's going to be a little bit of an overview and some of it's new. Can you hear me? Okay. Our budget, our budget assumptions for revenue for 2021 include a 10% total computational revenue deficit. And for 2021, '22, and '22, '23 includes a 5% TCR reduction. TCR is calculated, which is total computational revenue, is calculated using the Students Centered Funding Formula. The funding sources for TCR include property tax, student enrollment fees, education protection account, and the state general entitlement. The Students Centered Funding Formula is based on a base allocation reflecting enrollment, a supplemental allocation based on students receiving grants, and student success allocation based on outcomes such as number of degrees and transfers to four-year institutions. The 1920 rates for these metrics will hold for FY 2021. We are doing better than some with this formula, but we're uncertain of future changes to the formula and how it would impact us. Flat enrollments are estimated each year. Comparison between fall of 2019 and fall of 2020 shows a decrease in headcount of 2.2,000 and FTEs of 569, which could translate into millions of dollars of potential loss of revenue. Articles indicate few students are attending California community colleges. The early fall numbers show that. We did certify a COVID-19 emergency conditions allowance, which held 1920 P2, 1920 recalc, and advanced 2021 at P1 FTEs, which is about 11,000. Expenses include step and column increases and the decrease in pension rates, but no resource allocation in the budget committee until we have more information regarding the funding by the state. This pie chart shows the percent of revenue for each category for unrestricted and restricted. The majority of the funding comes from the state, which is 79% of the total. This pie chart shows the percent of expenses for each category. The majority of our expenses is salary and benefits, which is 65%, and 35% for all other categories. This is our three-year unrestricted fund projection. As stated previously, we're assuming a 10% and 5% TCR reductions. A set aside of $500,000 for categorical salaries and benefits is proposed in case any of those programs are cut. This allows time to make financial decisions regarding those programs. $100,000 set aside is for economic uncertainties to cover unanticipated emergencies, declines in property tax revenue, and other sources of funds, and additional program development activities not considered prior to a budget adoption. We are also showing structural deficit spending for three years. The Fiscal Crisis and Management Assistant Team helps prevent and resolve financial challenges. Their checklist was developed to evaluate an entity's fiscal health and risk of insolvency in the current and two subsequent years. The more responses that contain those increase your score. The higher the score, the greater the risk for insolvency. We use this checklist and have been considered a low risk. However, continued deficit spending would increase our score and risk of insolvency. Their list includes questions presented here on structural deficit spending. Are we avoiding it? If it is occurring, do we have a plan to estimate, I'm sorry, to eliminate it? And has it decreased? The community college system total deferral is $1 billion. Our portion for general is $13 million. Per this schedule, we are receiving no payments from February through June of '21. The Student Equity and Achievement Categorical will receive their full July payment and a small payment in August, with no payments from September through June for a total deferral of $5.4 million. Our FY 2021 advanced apportionment does not show any other programs being deferred. Some payments for programs were accelerated. To help monitor the impacts of deferrals, Diana Kealan created a cash flow tool that we will be using monthly. This is the schedule of deferral repayments. This information is fluid and should be expected to change. If we don't receive sufficient federal stimulus in October, it will be a challenge for the state to pay both regular monthly apportionment payments plus the deferral repayments. If we do receive the federal funding, this will trigger off some of the deferrals. Negotiations are set to resume on the stimulus package, but the proposals are about $1 trillion apart. We are estimating a cash flow deficit in June of FY 2021. This table includes all the funds that we can include to mitigate the cash flow deficit. Student trust accounts such as student rep fee, financial aid and scholarships along with Measure AB cannot be used. We are using a worst-case scenario for the bookstore with no revenue collections. A 2% deficit is estimated in 1920. If the deficit is lower and is not recalculated in February, these funds will help mitigate the cash flow deficit in June. A TRAN is a tax revenue anticipation note that is used when revenues and expenses are mismatched and are typically issued on a tax exempt basis. They cover expenses and are pledged against other revenues to be collected within at least 13 months of issuance. Projected cash deficit must be within six months of the issuance. There are costs associated with borrowings such as interest and issuance costs. TRAN pools are available, and the board has approved a standalone TRAN. At the time that's needed, we would need to assess, at the time that we determine when we would need a TRAN, we would need to assess any available pools and determine which option is best. There are pools available now with application deadlines in October. There's the California School Finance Authority, the Los Angeles County Office of Education, and the Community College League of California. The TRAN is sold to investors in February of 2021, and proceeds are delivered to a college in March and repaid in November. For budget reduction planning, we would have two phases. Phase one would include developing budget management plans and reviewing expenses such as hourly workers, non-instructional materials, consultants, license fees, travel and memberships. Phase two would include reviewing reassigned time, scheduling, furloughs, and step and column freezes. All of these are subject to collective bargaining agreements. Do you have any questions?
I do. Excuse me. A couple of things in my mind. Approximately, how much do you estimate receiving from the federal government to mitigate some of this, the money that we're going to be deficit?
Well, it's supposed to trigger off the first, a couple of the deferral payments. That's what we anticipate. So...
We're estimating about $791 million if the plan goes through for the system.
For the system.
And that would be about half, I think, of what we currently are anticipating for deferral. Since it's $1.5 billion that's being deferred.
Sorry, I'm a ventriloquist.
Very good. I was wondering how much you expect from the federal, for our community college.
Right. I believe it's, I'm sorry, I was just trying to go back to the slide that had that information. But it would be probably the first couple of deferral payments on the deferral payment schedule. So, I'm sorry, I don't have... Oh, thank you. I might have to come closer though. Like two and a half of those deferral payments that they're repaying. So about $5 million.
And approximately, if you received the federal funding, what would that be? That you would have to, would be the amount of the TRAN that you would need to apply for?
It would be, you know, $7 to $8 million.
Still after?
Yeah, yes.
What would be the annual cost for the seven days?
I'm not certain at this time.
Probably roughly about $200,000. That includes the issuance costs for the attorneys, all of the broker fees. It can't exceed 2% of what we issue.
And just a couple other things. Can you tell me approximately how much our enrollment, is our enrollment down this first semester? Because it seems to be the trend everywhere that enrollment is down. Do you know approximately what percent our enrollment is down this?
It's down about five...
Headcount's down 13%. FTS is down 11%. It's 2,200 students headcount and 570 FTE.
Under your phase one budget reduction planning, you've mentioned some of the things that we've already done. Has all travel been stopped at this point?
Majority of travel has stopped. We're not traveling, but we might be doing some webinars that are required.
So the only webinars we're attending are the ones that are actually mandated by law?
Are mandated because those individuals need that training for their job.
Yep. Most of, we have some statewide organizations that managers attend the webinars and the conferences that are, because of the uncertainty of things right now, we need the information. And so most of those, in the past, they would cost a couple of thousand bucks to attend, and now they're costing $250 to $400. And some of them are, like the league convention in November is now free. They're just putting it on for nothing. We're seeing a significant reduction. Nobody's physically traveling at all.
Have our supply costs gone down since we're not doing in-person instruction?
Yes. Well, our, I'm sorry, what was the last thing?
Since we're not doing the in-person instruction except the labs, have our supply costs gone down?
Yes, our supply costs have gone down.
And the remaining supply costs that are being incurred are being reviewed on a case-by-case basis?
Yes, all the...
The only place that we're actually spending significant money or any money at all on supply costs are in the aerospace program and the labs. Very little in the sciences because they're doing their labs almost virtually and the health sciences. Some of these are grant-supported. North of Greman last year, in-kind contribution in supplies for the AFA program of $315,000. So we're getting a lot of support from industry and those kinds of things. So there's a significant reduction in supplies there.
I'm assuming utility costs have also gone down since there are a number of buildings we're not actually using for instruction?
The utilities, yes, have gone down. I have not analyzed that yet, though.
Put together a plan to try and centralize instruction in just a minimum number of buildings in order to increase our utility cost reduction?
Yeah, the only buildings that are being used right now are TE7, Foxfield, one of the areas at Palm Dale Center, the idle lab, the welding lab, electronics lab, some of those buildings. And then we have people working in student services and business education building for the most part. There's very little work in any of the temporary buildings. It's mostly remote. People, we have work schedules that are submitted every day so we know who's on campus and where they are for things, but also knowing what buildings are being fired up. We've got LS 1, 2, and OF 3 are gone. And we don't have any athletes in the gym that are outside in conditioning exercises, and they haven't been because of the fires in the air. So there's very little occupancy on campus. And the fiscal plan is noticing that. We don't have computers on, many computers aren't needed.
Have we looked at renegotiating contracts with like outside legal counsel in order to reduce those kind of payments?
We can, we haven't, we haven't had, fortunately, we haven't had a need to use a lot of outside legal counsel except for the, I'm pretty sure we were last year.
Are we still paying for our lobbyists in second?
We still are, yes, this year. But that's one of the things that we're looking at for the coming year.
I just wanted to ask, how much have we received recently? Or have we? In one-time funding, K-12, they, we call it learning loss money, but it was a significant amount. Did we receive something very similar to that at the community college?
One-time money we have not received this year. We did receive, I believe, a few hundred thousand last year.
Well, we did receive CARES Act money from the Fed.
Yes, the CARES Act money. How much did we receive for that?
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about one-time state mandated.
Isn't that one-time money? CARES Act?
Well, it is one-time money, but there's also other one-time money, I apologize.
Okay, that's okay.
Right, we received about $5 million for our students' financial emergency grants. We also received another $5 million for institutional. We received about $600,000 for an MSI grant. Also, we received a block grant, which was about, a federal block grant, which is about half a million. And we'll receive about half a million possibly from the state. I think that covers it.
The CARES Act money is restricted in its use. I mean, you can't use that to backfill lost revenue. You can't use it for those things. So most of our CARES Act money has gone to students, student funded activities, everything from laptops and hotspots and distribution and direct cash payments.
Right.
We did offset some of our transition costs through the college to remote learning, which was allowable. But you can't backfill any budget shortfalls or revenue shortfalls with federal money. It has to be used directly for the remote stuff.
When is the sheriff's contract up, Bruno?
Usually, I think we're up in October. Is that a... No, we just signed it since next year.
We should probably look at trying to negotiate the reduction in that contract.
We're taking a look at all student workers and what is needed and our contribution to that along with the number of cadets that we have because we don't need as much. They are doing a very good job of patrolling them.
In terms of budget reduction planning slide, most of what we've been talking about just now is, I think, kind of falls underneath bullet point one. Bullet point two is kind of the review of the additional steps that we'll need to take going back to FICMAT's guidelines about deficit spending. Do we have a plan to eliminate spending deficit? I'm curious about the timeline for making some of these decisions. Some of this is subject to collective bargaining. Some of it, you know, this plan is fairly substantial. So what are we looking at in terms of the timeline to start making some decisions about what we'll do to mitigate the shortfalls in, you know, '21, '22?
Well, in '21, '22, we start budget building. We're actually starting some now and will be in earnest after the first of the year. We have already through council made initial contact with collective bargaining units to start setting the table and see what we can do there. But we are going to have to, as I told the executive council, we have to be looking for $100 bills, not $5 bills. And most of this is a cash flow issue. I don't, if enrollment's out, we're supposedly in a hold harmless, but that's kind of a misnomer. They show us as the total, just for this year, they show us with the total computational revenue of $82 million about in the general fund. But with the deferrals, we're going to get $69. And as you can see, we have a cash flow deficit of about $4 million. And we're budgeting at 74. So we anticipated the reduction anyway. We did it because we thought the enrollment was going to fall. And then being dependent upon a federal deal where there is no deal, and they're not even talking to each other, that's the reason that we're budgeting an additional 5% in the following year to, so that we anticipate from a budget standpoint. Because if there's no money coming into the state, the state is not going to be able to make double deferrals. They're not going to be able to pay back a deferral and create a deferral. So we've got to, then I'm afraid we would be looking at country to state level. And we're still going to have to pay for the whole, even if they can hold us harmless. But if the revenue doesn't rebound, if the enrollment doesn't rebound in the out year, then we still are going to have to pay that 5%.
Yeah. Excuse me. Ed, I just want to ask, there is a lot of conversation out there, especially this past week, that I'm going to talk primarily about Kern County, that we may be permitted to reopen as early as October 20th. Has the college heard anything about a possible reopening or a date to bring back the majority of our student population on campus?
Well, we've started a conversation on several levels about what we're going to do for spring. The Public Health Officer for LA County has said that the community colleges will be remote through spring. That is still in discussion. And I've already contacted Supervisor Bargher's office about that issue. LA County Community College District, which is nine colleges, has said they're going to be remote. There's about 57, about 57% of the community colleges statewide have already determined that they're going to be remote for spring. The CSU system has said it's going to be remote for spring. We haven't said anything yet. Pasadena City hasn't said anything yet. But we're talking with the deans and department chairs, and we're going to have to make the call next week simply because of scheduling issues and consistency and being able, for students to be able to prepare as well as faculty. And so we're going to have to make a decision. Now, there is, and there could be an opportunity where we could, with some of the science classes, particularly where we could do, hold the labs in a blended fashion, where half of the class comes one week and the other half watches via Zoom, and then they flip the next week and so they can get into the lab classes and whatnot. The essential workforce disciplines are already here. We've got probably 1,200 to 1,500 students in three locations taking classes. So in the health sciences and those kinds of things, aerospace, national defense, first responders, those disciplines. As far as pure lecture classes, probably going to remain remote through spring. We don't know that yet. And I keep hoping that we're going to hear something. I know that the positive rate with testing in LA County is at 3% or less. Hospitalizations are dropping. The death rate's dropping, all those kinds of things. All the numbers are positive. But I think they're just... I think things might change a little bit by Thanksgiving or the middle of November, but we'll see.
But you're saying we have to make this call next week?
Our schedule goes live October 15th, the spring. And registration starts in November. And registration starts in November with priority registration and then open registration. And, you know, we don't have intercession this year, so spring comes the second Monday of January.
I know there's a push for D back into the classroom, but I also know that there's a ton of push to remain safe. Isn't it kind of a wash whichever way we could do it as far as enrollment goes? We're going to lose some students either way to go.
Yes, we will, but I think what we hear from students and in student surveys, and we can make that survey public, well, we have public, we make it available to all of you. The students are really struggling with remote learning and a lot of them are just doing a wait-and-see. We may get some of the four-year students that were going to four-year schools, they're not paying full tuition to go to a four-year school, but they're not here either. And enrollments are down statewide. And if we're, if we're only out one more semester, then people will probably play the wait-and-see game through one more semester. And we'll see what kind of, you know, if we get a vaccine next month, it could change everything.
If I can, maybe this is a question for the president. But because I like comparisons and we went through the dire situation back in '07 and '08, and this seems a lot worse that we're facing right now. If you would kind of reflect on that a little bit. And then what are we basically doing to make campus aware of what we're facing?
Well, what we did, and of course, I don't know that Sarah was even in the system in 2008, 2009, but when we went through this before as a system, the deferrals weren't anywhere near as big. They were also accompanied by workload reduction. So in other words, if we're considered a mid-sized college of 10,000 FDS and they did a workload reduction of about 5%, so that designation went to 9,500. So you did, it was cutting student enrollment at the state level as what was here. Because as you know, our student demand was very high at that time. But we couldn't afford to provide all the stuff. So we, here, I think there was, you know, the things that we talked about in phase one is what we're going to, and there were some other issues, whatnot. We will go through the planning phase with people on campus. Right now, we've been talking about it with the department chairs and the dean significantly. It's also been presented at the budget committee and I think that will be another presentation at the strategic planning and the budget committee meeting, I believe it's next week. So they have a combined meeting and they'll start talking about it there. But we have to, what I would hope that we can do is provide a list of alternatives and then prioritize that list. Where we have to go realizing that some of the activity will have to be collectively bargained and some not. So it's, right now, we're, as Diana calls it, she can add to this because she was here before as well. We're looking at low-hanging fruit kind of things, memberships to dues, consultant fees, those kinds of things that were traveled, that's coming, it's almost nothing. Even athletic teams aren't traveling right now. So although they're still scheduled to have all sports in spring, we'll see how that works.
We also are going to be taking a look at the hourly budgets and, you know, trying to see where we can maybe make some reductions in those areas. We, last, last year, the president made a big effort in shifting a lot of the instructional material costs over to Proposition 20, which saved a significant amount on the unrestricted fund. So we've actually been planning for this in 1920. And we were able to shift about a million dollars over to grants and categorical programs. But we're, it's a continual process of, you know, taking a look at, you know, every expense, doing trend analysis on every account and then going through and determining what is essential and what is a nice-to-have and making decisions on, you know, getting rid of the nice-to-haves and just going back to essentials so that when we do have a number that is a shortfall, we've done everything we possibly can to cut and reduce expenses that are non-negotiable. And now we need to start working on potentially negotiable items if the deficit gets big.
So the second part of that, I want to make sure that the campus is very well aware and kind of taking that Bob Woodward approach, just let it hang out, make them understand that this is a very, very serious situation that we're facing. Worst, I think, obviously, suspect number four, maybe in history. So I want to make sure that they're aware because I don't want people coming back and saying, gee, I didn't know it was that bad. So I want to make it just right up front, that this is very bad, we need everybody to pull to get through this.
We'll come up with a very consistent communication plan. And the work of the budget committee and those kinds of things, as we make decisions and as we come up with a plan, I agree with you and we'll ensure that that happens, not just in committees, but, you know, and not just to the college committee, but to the community as well. Part of the issue is, where we're facing is, the state revenue for 21, 22 will be based on their, on income tax, property tax, and sales tax in 2020. And we've had, as you know, significant economic reductions. So this past year for 2021, the revenues from 2019 were down, but better than people thought. They were off about 6%. But that isn't going to hold going into next year because it's just not the economic base to tax. So it's been, and there's been quite, there's a lot of people leaving California as well. So the impact of that's going to be felt in 21, 22, and 22, 23. It's a lagging activity because of the way we budget. So this is something that people are going to have to understand, not just for the next six months. We've got a, we've got probably a two-year problem here.
Since we're doing a lot of online classes anyway, have we started marketing towards international students?
I can't answer that. We are on just about every social media outlet that's available. And a lot of that is available to the international students. We've never had a strong international base, but we can certainly find those venues.
That would be a good time to build up that.
Yep.
But one of the things that really concerns me, and I've talked to lots of students about quite a bit, long enough of working, is that, as was said earlier, they're not doing well with online. They don't like it, they're actually not doing well, and a lot of them are not doing well with actual classes. And if we can get some blended in there, that may help. I, it's unfortunate we're in LA County and dealing with the restrictions that I think are far too restrictive. But I think we're going to have to realize that our student enrollment will continue to drop because I know students who are actually sitting it out. They told me, we're not actually in school, we want to be in school, but we're not doing the online because it didn't work out for them in spring. So I think that we have to factor in that, obviously. When they return to campus, it's sounding like we're not even going to be open fully until August, maybe. This was 15 days. We were sitting here, what was it, last March, February? And it was 15 days and we were going to close for 30 and we're still in this situation. So obviously, it's not working. So that concerns me. And anything we can do with barger or any of those other supervisors to get this person off, this kick of keeping everything closed, becomes extremely important. Because I think we're in deep trouble with this, with the students, if we don't get reopened.
Yeah, I agree. I think that we're going to see very, very soon, I've talked to board members from some of the other local districts, and they too are very, very excited at the thought of possibly opening very soon. So I truly hope that if our community college could open second semester, that we certainly give that. We certainly look at all the reasons to advocate for our students first and foremost. Because I realize there's a safety issue, but at the same time, there will be cases, there's no doubt about that. But no one can guarantee us that they're not, you know, we don't know what they do on the weekends and at night, that they're not exposing themselves to something that, where they could bring something in on their own, not just pick up something here at our community college. So I think first and foremost, we need to be advocates for the students. And if there's any possible way we could open in January, we need to, in making that decision in October, we need to consider the students first. This is, this is not working. The prediction is we're going to see the largest number of dropouts in the state of California that we've ever seen, comparable to what they experience on a yearly basis in Baltimore, which is about 15% of the students graduating. That's a horrific number. And so I think as the community college, we have a, we have a responsibility to the students here to open and to return to some sense of normalcy as soon as possible.
Well, I second that and believe me, nobody wants that more than I do. I miss the energy, I miss the service, I miss the whole environment. And I do know that our maintenance and facilities group is doing a tremendous job in following behind and making sure that we're keeping things clean. We do now have foggers that are being used on a regular basis that have treated entire space in a very short period of time. I would dare say that our cleaning routines here for where we know where people are are better than the grocery store. And everybody's going to the grocery store.
So is our restrictions there simply the county? Are they the ones that are controlling us?
Yes, we're on a watch list, the county is on the watch list at the state level. And the governor has deferred some of those decisions. In some ways, we're in two different tiers of the governor's list. But the public health is keeping the lid on a lot of things, although barber shops and hair salon and whatnot are open again. I don't think the mall is open yet, but I, you know, they're looking at being, up north, they have bars and restaurants and wineries and whatnot open at a reduced capacity. And I think San Diego is open at a reduced capacity because they have some inside dining now. So it's slowly starting to pop open, but then, of course, we're headed into the flu season. So, you know, as everybody says, get the flu shot. And then I think the game changer is if the testing that's going on for a vaccine, and it seems to be progressing positively now, if that's approved and is available, I think that that will cause a lot of things to change. And we know now who's most vulnerable, so, and we could make arrangements for that. We're still working on the project of getting every classroom being a smart classroom, which means that even when we're back, if somebody is infected or ill or something, they don't have to come to class. They can turn on the camera, they can watch it Zoom from home, which I think will strengthen the learning environment anyway. Just in the future, Rick and his team create a Canvas shell for every CRM they have for some time. So they have that opportunity to load the materials into the Canvas shell now. And then with the Zoom capacity that will be there, the students could go back and review continuously or never miss a class continuously.
Well, I think it brings up a good point that, you know, I absolutely agree that advocating for a student's name is what we need. But going back to what it looked like before is probably less productive than looking forward to, how can we, how can we go to a model that really incorporates all of this stuff that we've been forced to learn distance from, but incorporated in a way that allows us to capitalize on both? We know that students need face time, we know that. But can we also use a blended model in a way that is very, very productive and supportive? And move forward that way rather than just kind of bemoaning the fact that, you know, we don't have to look like we don't have our students around like we're accustomed to. Because it may never look the same again. But perhaps it could look better, perhaps it could be just a little bit more supportive rather than, you know, rather than less. And maybe for a second semester, maybe it's that blended model that lets us bring more students back instead of having to play that wait-and-see game, knowing that they will at least be on campus, you know, sometimes rather than all of the time, it down to a little bit of that.
And we have to look at getting student services as well, the counseling, the tutoring, the things. All those things work a lot better face-to-face than you do distance. And so, you know, we've started talking about maybe we could do something on an appointment basis, control the flow that way. And so that the students that are most needing can get the services they need. We're doing, we're still doing food distribution every other week, we're doing books help, we're doing, we've got computers on loan, we've got hotspots out there on loan, we're doing all those things that we can to support students. And we have, most services are online, but it's different than in person. So maybe there's a way we can control the flow, just like the grocery store did in the beginning, control the flow and get students back a little bit into a traffic area that we've got control of. We're looking at all those things. And I can tell you that the college presidents are pushing to get open too. It's a statewide problem. So everybody's working pretty hard. We get together every other week on Zoom statewide. And, but Dr. Van Hook and myself and a couple of the other presidents here in the local area have been pushing waivers for North County so that we can maybe get open a little bit. I know Mayor Paris and Mayor Hopfire have been doing the same. So we keep trying to get waivers and get a little relief that way. Because we're more like Kern County than we are LA County.
Anything else, anybody? Well, I appreciate the conversation, I very much appreciate the update, thank you very much for that. And assuredly, this is a subject we'll come back to many times.
Unfortunately.
No, I appreciate the fact that a lot of, a lot of people are thinking creatively about ways to address this. So thanks for keeping us up to speed. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 12th. And if there's nothing else, then we will call this meeting adjourned at 8:50.